黑色让我想起了烟灰盒里的肺部烟灰的肺部会变黑那些烟灰灰烬会随着早上的蒸汽灰烬变成灰尘
欢迎回到《deadly premonition》游戏 上一次我们完成了A地图的神秘任务 并获得了无限数量的机枪并做了许多额外的任务但是这次我们正在前往社区中心来让这个小镇会议开始现在我们已经到了那里我们只需要穿过这片田野这里就是通往社区中心的入口我们还有一大半的时间才能真正开始 现在是13:34 但还没有开始所以我们还是有点早这是 Polly 提前跟我们说过的那个钟塔但是因为现在还是挺早的还没有人在这里厅子空荡荡的 等到1500 然后开始 是的，所有人都在这里 但是我们还没有见过他们让我们开始吧
兰德韦社区中心这真是太棒了钟塔也很漂亮 Zack，我从 elementary 学校开始没有站在舞台上我也不是像棵树一样那个角色很艰难我是一个风景人物明丽的红树
谢谢大家今天来直接进入正题警察莫根从联邦调查局想和你谈谈
下午好我是特工队的 Francis York Morgan 真的是一个残忍的犯罪不幸的是这种案件经常发生今年还会再次发生首先请远离黑暗危险隔壁的地方有小孩的孩子特别是安娜的年龄请第二点在下雨时不要出去现在我知道了花花世界雨天有危险猝杀者他是在这个故事中女性也应该特别小心我不想看到更多受害者
谁是时尚派对老
那是 Carolyn，Thomas 的妹妹她有自己的酒吧
对不起就如我说的在下雨时不要外出幼轻女性应该特别小心立刻报告任何可疑的人这就是我要说的谢谢当我们忏悔罪时我们不应该感到沮丧安娜的死亡是她的债务当紫色雾笼罩我们的小镇我的朋友们都会去地狱这就是 Mr. Stewart 说的
确实知道怎么偷雷
好吧 Zack 让我们问一下这些家伙
好，听起来是个好主意 和镇上的人交谈而且他们在同一个地方
警察莫根这是你有机会了解一些镇上的人别浪费时间
好吧 George 我们要和他们交谈先看看这张白纸说什么直接死亡的直接原因死亡的伤口我们有一个非常画得非常出色的犯罪现场地图我不知道我们真的需要一张白纸吗让我们和 Thomas 交谈
警察 York 你的言论让我想起安娜的死亡怎么能做这样的坏事我还在震惊
Thomas，我想问一下 你不是脖子上有纹身的吗
呃，纹身？ 我其实有但是为什么
你能给我看吗
什么现在这里
是的请这对我们调查至关重要
好吧如果这能帮助你
好吧，我现在在想 G 是谁但是除此之外它告诉你了吗它告诉我你没有杀害安娜
当然不是你说什么
Zack，你应该看看那个纹身 大的心，里面有个箭头 Love G 在中心我不知道你怎么做到的 我猜是80年代的
好吧，我觉得没有经历过80年代的人 都会有纹身上面写着 Love G
很好的表演谎言很有诗意但我认为你的观众不会喜欢
Mr. Francis York Morgan 紫色雾在下雨中出现溶解和摧毁我们的小镇恶魔不会消失找出为什么小镇能看到它掉除它导致的来源然后只有然后你的案子被解决了但是为了让它发生解决犯罪问题的根源在小镇还不是你那就是 Mr. Stewart 的时候不是 但是如果你，Mr. York 找到合适的时机和机会看到没有这就是 Mr. Stewart 说的
所以，Harry 你知道一些东西但是你还没有告诉我理由你说的是这样吗
停止这种有诗意的废话，Harry 说说你知道的我们可以强迫你说话
Mr. Francis York Morgan 注意声音故事和预兆小小的但它们仍然有效和你的调查有所帮助这就是 Mr. Stewart 说的
谢谢提醒，Harry 但别担心我和 Zack，我们知道我们在做什么
哦，Well，York 现在只是在和其他人谈论 Zack 像没什么大不了好像有人留下他们的咖啡我们就拿这个 York 没问题喝别人喝的半用的咖啡
警察 York，你还没问完问题吗 当你回答完，告诉我 我们都会吃晚饭
嗯，我们还没问完问题 我们在 auditorium 结束了他们只是在那里我们不能和他们说话他们没有名字但是背后那堵墙是 Richard 和 Quint 我们去和他们谈谈看他们说什么
Quint 你也来了我以为你是小镇会议的那种人
我的朋友被杀了，你知道吗，伙计 我不会让这个事情平白无故发生我会做任何事来帮你抓住这个家伙
谢谢但警觉不是正义
哎，来吧，我不是那么愚蠢 但是我很 frustration 只是想着我没有什么可以做的
我们每个人都有职责 raison d'etre 别忘了这一点
我知道，我知道 你只是在说我你就像我的老朋友
Zack，哇 我在震惊如一个电扇在吹风他让我意识到我快老了
这可能有些不平静
所以，你过得怎么样
是的，差不多 但是有些人很难相处
问题我以为城里人习惯了这种状况这里的人比这里多
好吧，这是事实 但我开始简化了一些事情这是我的新思维方式 它很简单，真的 有三种人犯罪分子受害者和调查员其他人都是根本菜根本菜叫做其他的人
你真的很奇怪
所以我想那些人在 auditorium 他们会是蔬菜而这个是谁我们还没有见过有点奇怪
晚安，警察
晚安，Mr.
Brian 墓墓守卫 Brian
Mr. Brian 我喜欢 retro 的风格在 Little Grave on the Prairie 里 audition
安娜 哦，她真是太漂亮了 太早了太 太早了，去墓地 很悲伤很悲伤
我完全同意就是为什么我在这里寻找那个杀人者你和她很近吗
安娜她的笑容很温暖安娜红头发那么明亮
Zack，小镇有个墓地 我对这个想法不太满意或许我们应该去看看
哦，我不明白为什么 我不明白他看起来很友好我们和 Agent Anna 和 Carolyn 合作我们聊聊天
安娜是一个空手道家
你说什么你说她被杀死是因为她是空手道家吗还是说她被杀死是因为她是个空手道家
我肯定她还在天堂她每天换发型 如果她减了一磅，她会兴奋 加一磅，她几乎流眼泪 她总是笑着总是玩乐大家看着她就知道她是一个可爱喜欢空手道家但他们都会笑着和她一起我不会惊讶如果天使也会和她一起笑
Isaac 和 Isaiah 说安娜是森林中的妖怪女神
好吧，这让她有点不安 她对我们开了口但是不觉得这么做很舒服他们说她有自己的夜总会或许我们应该晚点拜访
所以你是 FBI 警察，对吧
我是 FBI 特工队的 Francis York Morgan
我是将军我为我国家在越南战争中战斗
一个真实战争的英雄所以你为什么在这里
军人，这是我家乡 当一个军人退役后没有别的地方去了除了他的家乡你的演讲中你提到了 Raincoat Killer
那是什么问题
你这个卑鄙之人 Raincoat Killer 是传说不只是 folklore 不是童话
它是我感兴趣你能告诉我更多关于这个吗
军人，如果你想听更多 你来我的办公室
他 literally 激发了真正的力量，Zack 尽管 credibility 的问题我们应该给他一个访问但是自己自称将军但那不是军官的制服吗
嗯，那会显得有点奇怪 哎，看这里
警察 York，你有什么进展吗
当然很多 但告诉我，Usher，安娜的葬礼什么时候
还是 undecided Sally 现在并不适合这么做
她的母亲我看不到她在这里
安娜是她唯一的意义当她丈夫去世后她很可能在家里
我应该给她一个访问
好吧，你应该这么做 我也感激你 但是不要太努力，安娜，好吗
这是游戏告诉你如果你没有给 Sally 一个访问或许你应该去做
你靠近抓捕凶手的脚步了吗
欢迎再次光临，Fiona 很高兴见到你
好吧，Dr. Johnson 告诉我来这里他说这很重要
好吧，那是很好的建议 他虽然年轻但他看起来像个聪明人
哦，他也是个非常努力的人 大家都认为他是个怪人但我真的不相信人们不明白他整天都在 autopsy 区但我知道他在研究使世界变得更美好 你知道，他在 LA 工作的时候已经发财了
我不知道
你没有 哦，医生是个很有钱的人 他有一个很大的房子就在湖边
奇迹，Zack 他应该很丰富有钱又年轻完美的组合
但是你得不到他那种感觉，对吧 他不会展示这是我最喜欢他的地方
好吧，我可能会被骗 如果不是因为你 谢谢你提供的宝贵信息，Fiona
现在我以为 Usher 在 autopsy 区整天因为他在那里玩那个 chess 程序好像像是 chess master 我听说有人知道
我是 FBI 特工队的 Francis York Morgan 请叫我 York
Wesley，Panda Bear 店长人们在这里叫我 Gunsmith 你有什么想问我吗
我会担心因为店里不可能有很多顾客
担心会让一个小问题变成大阴影我也在我的店铺里做 gunsmith 如果你有技能顾客会找到你你需要的是网络
我希望如此
现在 Wesley 没有太多的枪但是游戏继续他会有更多的库存
你这里有很多选择不奇怪人们来自世界各地
今天客户还付我去 Seattle 的钱我刚回来
我明白了 好吧，我会随时拜访你的店铺 我想让你看看我的枪
明白很期待明天店铺会再次开放通常是从 2000到0600 我们再会
所以如果你注意到他的店铺是开着的是晚上 10 点到早上 6点不太阴暗这是唯一一个晚上都开着的店铺
你可以告诉我
好吧但是
任何东西不管多么小的帮助
好吧，你看 餐厅在下雨时关闭很多店铺在这里这样做你可能听说过无论如何安娜总是不在意下雨那天也来得晚想起来那真的很奇怪那个传奇怪物真的杀了她吗
它不是怪物只是个犯罪分子我要去逮捕并带回正义
好吧，Nick 终于把你从厨房里赶出来了我们要让你看到我们的 badge
我是 US 特工队的 Francis York Morgan 我猜你是安娜工作的地方的店主对 我想问你关于安娜·格莱姆的问题 Nick 你在隐瞒什么 不，什么都没有 你确定 我很抱歉，但我不喜欢重复自己
好吧，我一点都不喜欢这个答案 我猜 Nick 只是嫉妒因为我们把他从厨房里赶出来但是我想我们以后会调查他现在看这里
哎，Lily
警察 York 你的演讲让我们有点害怕
真的吗我尽力了
就是 Becky 她在店里兼职她最近表现奇怪
怪异，怎么了
我今天带孩子们来参观她的房子我只是担心但是她带孩子们进来说在外面等我我根本不懂
那很有趣 谢谢，Lily 或许我们明天拜访 Becky
我同意 Becky 在监视我们
哎，York 你在那里疯狂
我是吗我从 elementary 学校开始没有站在舞台上
你让我想 伙计，就像 事情不能再这样我们需要一些行动我当时很兴奋 你知道吗，你一上舞台 我就像一个真正的变态很漂亮的表演但现在我意思是伙计那个疯子可能是我们中的任何一个我不想想到那个混蛋跟着我的家人让我浑身发抖它太重了 你会抓住他，对吧，FBI
当然但是你需要照顾你爱的人
你说得对，伙计 很高明我需要为我的家人做对你让我心安理得 谢谢，FBI
我感觉到 Keith 的脑袋里音乐一直不停还有一些人要和我们交谈我们还没结束好像 Polly 已经做到了
警察 Morgan 你是个很棒的演讲者
真的吗 谢谢，Polly 什么戏
我说的是这个地方还是被称为 Mercury Theater 赢过上帝我们周末去看最新的戏他总是假装不感兴趣他就是那种人现在想想
真的，Polly 所以你的 favorite 戏是什么
哦，好吧，我看了很多 有一个特别的但是我已经忘记了它的名字 哦，也是一个很有名的
什么 Shakespeare 作品
哦嗯 不，什么 再一个铃声不再响他的眼睛如此闪亮像一个快乐的小男孩
我明白了所以你的 favorite 戏是什么
哦，我差点忘记了，Mr. Morgan 我们很快会有一个嘉宾我得回去准备 对不起，我得匆匆离开 我会在酒店见你
Zack，我觉得她能让 FBI 的调查员们尴尬 她成功地拒绝了我的问题，Zack 奇迹
好吧，我们和 Polly 讨论了嗯嗯哼
哎呀我的水壶在变冷 哎，先生 我的水壶在变冷
你是谁
你说什么我是 Sigourney Sigourney
Sigourney，好吧 现在怎么回事你能解释吗
没时间聊天我得赶紧我的水壶在变冷 No time for chatting. I need to hurry. My pot is getting colder. Oh, you're useless.
Zack, we've met all sorts today, but really, she takes the cake. Amazing.
Well, I guess we'd better end this town meeting soon, because we wouldn't want her pot getting cold. Just a few more people to talk to. Here's Jim.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well, I guess they do, son. I want to keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can. Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home. Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to, in order to do my job. But I understand what you mean. I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
I can understand all that, but I mean, look who you're sitting next to, Jim.
Hello again, Agent York. How are you?
Good, thanks. And you?
Oh, I'm feeling pretty good today.
Well, that's good to hear. Do you have any information that could help me out?
Information? Sounds difficult and not my kind of conversation. Anyways, you should come by the gas stand again. I'll give you the best service in town.
Zack, perhaps you can tell me, why did she bother coming here?
No, I can't answer that question either, York.
I'm not in the say to you.
I haven't asked you anything yet, Jack.
Shut it! I might open up if you introduce me to, I don't know, a Ben Franklin or two.
Oh, what a creature. Guess there's always someone like him in every town.
Agent Morgan, I'd like to let everyone go home now. Let's go outside.
And the chapter is complete. So, we've done the town meeting, and now we've met all of the residents of Greenville. So perhaps this can help us focus the investigation on any characters that might be particularly suspicious.
Well then, Agent York, do you have any plans for this evening?
I was going to head back to the hotel and go over my notes. I need to contact HQ and give a progress report too.
Okay, then let's call it a day here.
Sounds good.
Contact my office when you finish your report. We'll pick you up tomorrow morning. Diane, the owner of the art gallery, should be back soon.
Alright then, let's do that.
Hold on, Agent York. We're going out to eat at Nick's diner. Would you like to come with us?
The diner? That might be nice.
Thomas is a great cook, but Nick is the real deal. No visit to Greenville is complete without eating at the A&amp;G.
A very appealing proposition. Zack, what do you think? You can always go back to the hotel after eating dinner. Or go directly back to the hotel. You decide, Zack.
Yeah, let's eat dinner with them.
Mm-hmm.
I've been sheriff here for a long time now, and this is the worst murder I've ever seen.
Our town is a little odd in some ways, but it's usually a peaceful place.
We had our fair share of cases, but just the regular stuff. A high school kid shoplifting from the milk barn, maybe? Or some hot-headed kids fighting, fueled on liquor. Nothing more than that.
Agent York, what kind of cases have you dealt with in the past?
Not much different from those you've just mentioned. The case I was on until last month, well, the guy killed seven girls in a three-month period. He sawed their heads off from the neck and took them back to his house. He cleaned the skulls up and used them as utensils in his daily life. To eat from or as a urine cup. He hated women. That was his way of dealing with it. He'd fill skulls with ice, cola, and rum, and he'd down it in one gulp. For him, that was a holy ritual.
Oh, man.
For me, he was insane. A hundred percent. Drinking from the skulls, well, that is one thing. But those he had used to relieve himself, he would then just use them to drink from too. Yeah, that was too much for me. It's just not sanitary.
Not sanitary? Uh, that's probably not the problem for most of us.
What else? Ah, yes. An ingenious law school student raped over eight hundred victims. That was a next one.
Thank you, Agent York. Now, let's talk about something else.
You don't want to hear anymore? That's a shame, isn't it Zack? I was just about to get to the good part too.
Sounds like you live in a totally different world. I mean, you're like, an elite agent who just jumped out from a movie or something. In your eyes, we must look like we're just playing cops and robbers. Ugh, I give up. I can't compete with you.
Don't say that, Emily. The cases you have solved are all full-fledged crimes. A crime is a crime. Size doesn't matter. There is no big and small. Crimes always have a criminal and a victim. No victim will ever welcome a crime, no matter what its size. So fundamentally, there is no difference in size.
Well said, Agent Morgan. We work day and night to preserve peace and order in this town. You understand that, right?
Of course, but still, I don't view shoplifting and Anna's murder as the same level of crime.
Me, neither. I never even dreamt that such a thing could ever even happen in this town. I keep on expecting to see Anna, here in this diner, waiting on tables.
Excuse us, Agent Morgan. We should have made dinner a more uplifting experience. Let's call it a night.
Okay. Good night then.
We haven't really been doing a good job of solving this one quickly. Looks like we were out quite late eating dinner. It's 22:30 right now, which means just about everything is gonna be closed. Not much else to do, except just go back to the hotel and have York work on his notes like he said he was gonna do. I mean, we could pay Wesley the Gunsmith a visit since his shop is open all night, but not much point to doing it right now. So, as I said before, now that we've been to the town meeting and we've met all the residents, now we have an idea of perhaps who should we be speaking to. Nick definitely was not happy to be there, so perhaps that's something that could be explored. Uh, George did say that we would be paying the art gallery a visit tomorrow, since the proprietor, Diane, is supposed to be back. So she was not at the town meeting. George and Emily felt that perhaps of all the women in the town, maybe she would be the one most likely to wear high heels out in the forest setting. So, we have not met her yet. Of course, we did notice that Carol was wearing high heels herself. So we don't yet know who Miss Stiletto Heels was. Someday I'm gonna get that curve right. But okay, here we are back at the hotel, so let's finish up our duties for the day.
Okay then Zack, let's go back over our progress. First the victim, Anna's death. She was found hanging from a tree in the forest. She was cut open with a knife from her chest down to her stomach. That was the direct cause of death. The strangulation marks and skull fracture were caused after death. Her tongue was also bit off, and I found something inside her mouth. Do you remember what that was, Zack?
Sure, it was a red seed, just like the ones that York has.
That's right. We found the same red seed in her mouth. According to Emily, it was raining when Anna was killed, but traces of tears were still evident on her face. Which means the perpetrator killed Anna under a roof in the lumber mill, and then carried her body into the woods after it's done. We found numerous important pieces of evidence at the site of the crime. Total of four things. Knee prints in the grass, wood chip in the dust, photo of a man with tattoos on his back. One other thing. Do you remember what that was, Zack?
Of course, it was the heel, I'm sorry, the shoe with the broken heel.
That's right. Miss Stiletto Heel. Aligning this with the other evidence suggests that two people came into contact with Anna's body prior to it being discovered by us. Those being the perpetrator who killed Anna, Miss Stiletto Heel. There is also the possibility that a third party carried Anna to the woods. That means we could be dealing with three people. Two or three people. In any case, Miss Stiletto Heel may have vital information. We need to find her next. We didn't use forensic methods, but we're still closing in on the criminal. Have I forgotten anything? Ah, of course. The marks on her hand tell us that Anna was gripping something when she died. Do you remember that, Zack? What do you think she was holding on to?
Well, we had established that it was a round object.
That's right. A round object. The marks on her hand suggest a peace mark. The man in the photo found in the woods had a tattoo of an upside-down peace mark on his back. These two could well be related. But we don't know for sure. Next, the town folk. A few are worthy of special attention. Carol McLean, the singer and bar owner. She's Thomas's sister. Then there's Nick Cormac, the owner of the diner. Both of them seem to be hiding something. There's Diane, the owner of the art gallery who's out of town. Then we have problematic old, rich, and eccentric Harry. Both will be tough to crack. Well, we just have to go one by one. I've been thinking. One of the biggest rewards here is the fantastic food. Enjoying food is cultural, and yet it's also a bit uncivilized. It's interesting how good food motivates me to work harder during investigations. Oh, and on Emily's back, it was strange to me. Hey, don't take that the wrong way, Zack. I wasn't getting all excited or anything. But it did make me feel strange. Nostalgic and sad almost. It's starting to rain. I think this case may take a while.
And as chapter dinner ends, not only the chapter, but episode two of the game has ended as well. So as we go into episode three, York has determined that people of special interest will be Nick, Carol, Diane, and Harry. So we'll be visiting Diane at the art gallery. See you next time.
Zack, is there something here that you want to check out? We need to be at the community center by 1500 today. Just think of talking in front of all those people. What do you think, Zack? It's going to get fun. It's going to get fun.